Like to begin by recognizing moment of silence for the following. Michael J. Bragman, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Yes, you may say something. Absolutely.
Michael Bragman was our community. Michael Bragman was Towne Cicero Councilman. Later was a county legislator, the only Democrat to ever lead the county legislator. Then Assemblyman and then went on to be the Majority Leader. I was privileged to know Mike because of my classes at Bear Road in my first life. We took the train, another teacher and I took forty-five kids to Albany. And he just treated them, every child, as if they were important. They got to sit in the Assembly Chamber. One time, they were in session, it was a very important debate. And they said, well, kids, you can go in for a little bit, but be quiet. But he stopped the proceedings and acknowledged that Bear Road students were there. He was just an amazing man. As you know, he had a lot to do with the stadium at Cicero. All the schools throughout New York State, whether it's track, football, always want to use our our stadium because of its great facility, and that's because of Michael Bragman. He will be missed. He was this community, no matter where you look, it's Michael Bragman. Highways, whatever, so I am really saddened by this because he was a great American and a great Central New York person. Thank you.
No, thank you, Mr. Crabtree. I would add something, but I don't think there's anything to add. He did a lot for his district when he was in the Assembly. It was phenomenal. So, thank you. Okay, we have some proclamations. We're going to start with School Administrator Appreciation Day. School administrators, the leaders of public schools, have had a positive impact on students, staff, parents, and members of the community at large. School administrators energize students and staff, respond to student needs, empower others, and recognize and celebrate achievement. School administrators, whether they work directly in a school building or at the district level, share the common goal of providing the foundation, environment, and professional learning community in which all students can learn and learn well. School administrators are entrusted with the well-being of our community's most precious members, the children. The administrators of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber. Students, parents, staff, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to provide children with a five-star quality education program. To honor the administrative staff of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our community's most valuable resource, the children, I, Paul Farfali, a president of the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education, on behalf of the Board of Education, express our deepest gratitude to our administrators and proclaim November 2nd, 2023, as School Administrator Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. I get a motion for that, motion for Mr. Segru, second for Mr. Thorne, any discussion? Seeing none at all in favor, pose, and that is carried. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to call up administrators so that they can receive a certificate and shake Mr. Farfalia my hand. Mrs. Wheeler, will you please come forwards, Cicero Elementary Principal? Mrs. Maloney, Principal Smith Road? Mrs. Sullivan, Executive Principal, CNS High School? Mr. Stone, Director of Elementary Education? Mr. Nephew? Associate Superintendent for Human Resources? Mr. Keegan, Associate Superintendent for Business and Finance? Mr. Leahy, Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning? Matt Irwin is here, is Matt? Well, Matt Irwin, yes. And I think that concludes the administrators that are here. If we can give them another round of applause. Thank you. Hey. We now have said on, School Psychologist Appreciation Day, should be November 9th, and I'll read the following proclamation. Around our school buildings, school psychologists have had an impact on the district's students and families. They have accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. School psychologists of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber and have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive quality services. To honor the school psychologists of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments, I, Paul Farfali, a president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the Board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare November 9th as School Psychologist Appreciation Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. A motion, please. Motion for Mr. Xavier Moody-Wuzik and Mr. Crabtree, a second, any discussion? Seeing none at all in favor, posed, and that is carried. Thank you. This time, if we do have any school psychologist in the room, if they can come forward. Mr. Krilla, if you can come forward as well? What we will do is, we'll bring everyone up and we'll have people introduce themselves and what school they're in, and then we will hand out certificates.
Hi, my name is Maureen Gill. I am a school psychologist at CNS High School.
Amanda Foster, School Psychologist at Cicero Elementary.
Hi, I'm Megan Vanderlin. I'm a school psychologist at Smith Road Elementary.
Dana Morbeto, Smith Road Elementary.
Samantha Gaines, School Psychologist at Gillette Road Middle School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. Before you continue, Mr. Farfalia, we're going to have one additional appreciation. This time, we are going to announce we have School Board Member Appreciation. And the role of being a School Board Member has always been challenging, whether because of the time commitment or the difficult decisions and hard work that are put in. The countless hours that are devoted towards North Syracuse Central School District is greatly appreciated. We want to make sure that we recognize your efforts with these certificates for all that you do in the district because it is School Board Appreciation Week as well. So, at this time, I'm going to have Jill, if you can come here and hand out the certificates. Thank you. I didn't think you all wanted to stand up and shake my hand, so I figured we would just hand them out. Very nice, thanks. But we wanted to recognize you for your efforts and for your commitment. And again, the two meetings a month and the time and the effort does not go unnoticed. So, this is something that NISBA is also making sure they're recognizing School Board Members. So, again, if everyone can give our School Board a round of applause. Hey. Now we have a recognition of a Cicero North Syracuse High School student who earned a rare perfect score on the Advanced Placement Exam. North Syracuse Central School District celebrates 12th grade student Ashton Murdock for earning a perfect score on a college-level Advanced Placement Exam in the spring of 2022. Ashton was one of only 489 students in the world. I'll say that again, in the world, not just this country, to earn every point possible on the AP Computer Science Principles exam. Students who succeed in AP are not only more likely to succeed in college, but have the chance to save a significant amount of time and money by earning college credit or placement. Colleges and universities around the world receive AP scores for college credit, advanced placement, and/or consideration in the admissions process. Joining the Board of Education in recognizing Ashton are his computer science teacher, Matt Harving, Harvinger, and CNS Executive Principal, Principal, excuse me, Jamie Sullivan. Ashton, on behalf of the Board of Education, this certificate is for you for your wonderful, phenomenal accomplishment.
Thank you.
And I'm lucky I can scroll this agenda on this computer. Where's my abacus?
Mr. Farfalia?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind if I make a comment on Ashton real quick before he leaves?
Sure.
I'd just like to personally congratulate Ashton on his perfect test score. I think we all have something to learn from Ashton, not just intellectually, but philosophically as well. The passion he radiates in everything he does, has, and continues to inspire me to push myself further and make the most of the time I have. No matter what he chooses to do with his life, I know Ashton's life will lead him to greatness. Thank you.
Hey, we have Smith Road here for their BPT, get to follow that act, so. You're up when you're ready.
Green, got it. Can you hear me now? Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I am Lindsay Maloney, the Building Principal at Smith Road.
My name is Ariana Rosario. I'm the BPT Chair, as well as one of the ENL teachers. So, a little bit about Smith Road is that our enrollment has stayed most, just about the same. But we are a very unique building because we have three different programs in addition to just our general education classroom. So, we have our CTD rooms, our ENL rooms, as well as three special classes. And that makes us unique from a lot of other buildings in the district. The only numbers in our enrollment that has really changed this year is our transient numbers. And our mission and vision statement, as you can see, are aligned with the district's mission and vision statement. We're really focused on every single student can learn, no matter what program they're in, as well as using a collaborative team approach. So, we use collaborative team approach when talking about data, as well as when students are collaborating in the classroom.
So, our first goal is around our multi-tiered system of support, and it's around creating a professional learning community within Smith Road. So, our specific goal is, we, by the end of June, we will have all teachers participating in our weekly collaborative team time meetings. Those are centered around the four PLC questions. So, we are always having conversations about what we want our students to learn, how we're going to know if they've learned it, what we'll do to intervene, and what we're going to do to enrich as well. So, based on those four questions, we target our intervention around the Tier One instruction. And our hope is that we will have a 3% decrease in the number of students that qualify for our intervention services. Some of the strategies that we are going to implement to reach our goal is collaborative team times, like I said, focused on the four, the four questions. It really drives every agenda item, or every agenda, I'm sorry, has these four guiding questions. We do meet once weekly for 50 minutes. And another thing we're going to do is really, we're diving in right now on developing a common understanding of our essential standards. So, the district has identified what those essential standards are. And now we're working on just making sure we all have a common understanding of proficiency, what that looks like, and also the level of rigor. We also are working on teams staying on pace with the CKLA pacing guide. So, we're touching base weekly to make sure we're all on the same page, ensuring a guaranteed and viable curriculum. We're also this year really looking at our unit assessments. This is something new this year. Now that we've lived a year of CKLA, we're ready to really take a look at those unit assessments and look at the data. We also are making sure that we schedule the following week. Those agendas have the agenda items on those, or what's on those agendas is that we're looking at that data. So, not only are we administering the same assessments, but then we are scheduling time to look at that data and then plan and intervene, as well as enrich. Our second goal is around graduation rate, and our focus at Smith Road is our chronic absenteeism. So, we are looking to decrease our chronic absenteeism from 23% to 18%. As you can see, we were able to make some progress last year. We really spent a lot of time digging into the data. So, we will continue to do that this year. One of the things we've done, we've taken a few committees and combined them into one, creating an engagement committee. This committee focuses on social-emotional, chronic absenteeism, as well as our character ed. So, that committee is really focusing on ways that we can engage the students when they're in school, as well as engaging our families outside of school. We have bi-weekly STAR meetings. So, this is where our social workers, the psychs, myself, we meet and we discuss students. We also are going to make it a habit to do bi-weekly attendance checks at those meetings. So, we'll pull up reports bi-weekly, identify those students that are falling in the chronic absenteeism range, and then notify those teachers. I think sometimes, you know, teachers, they're so busy, and they're, they're in the classroom teaching, and attendance, sometimes it's not, they're not as aware. So, we're making sure we're letting teachers know, identifying those students, and then coming up with ways that we can get them to school. We're going to continue our tiered support system. So, we have a system where we follow, we start at the Tier One level, where teachers are making the contact with the families. It then moves to our social workers and then to myself at the Tier Three level. So, we'll continue that process. We are going to continue our mentor program. We're getting that up and running right now. And then a new thing this year is we're implementing a building-wide attendance challenge. So, we'll see how that goes. It's not individual attendance, it's grade level. So, we're going to celebrate attendance across the grade levels, while also continuing to educate the students and the families about the importance of attendance. Oh, one, one quick thing I wanted to mention before I turn this over to Ariana to talk about our reading and math proficiency data. I just want to make note that we're going to be taking a look at our Ames Web universal screening data, as well as the New York State New York State Assessment Data. They are different points of data. They're both valid points of data. We take multiple points of data into consideration when we're looking at, you know, gaps or student achievement proficiency. So, these are the two that we are going to take a look at tonight. But just keeping in mind that they're, they're both very valid with the universal screening data comparing our students against millions of other students across the country. So, turn it over to Ariana.
So, as you can see, we increased in our Ames Web proficiency score only by 1%, but it did go up. And our ELA New York State score did decrease. We kind of anticipated this kind of stagnant place because we did just implement the CKLA program. And we're hoping with the next few years, when teachers really have it under their belt as far as instructing, and students are receiving that viable curriculum over the next few years, that this is, scores are going to increase. So, we really weren't that concerned about it this year because we are kind of expecting this to happen. So, our goal is to increase our proficiency from 41 to 46% in our New York State ELA proficiency from 27 to 31%. And we're going to be really looking at the Ames Web Plus Composite Reading Score Tiered Assessment, as well as our New York State assessments, because this will give us a real look at what our students still need and what they're doing really well on. Some strategies that we're going to use to be able to do this are use our multi-tiered systems of support. We have instructional TAs to help support with our Tier Two and Tier Three instruction. We're going to use that collaborative team time to dive into the data and make sure all of the teachers have a common understanding of our essential standards, as well as use that time to go over our common assessments and see where we need targeted intervention to ensure all of our students have mastery for all the essentials. As you can see on our math proficiency, we kind of stayed a little bit stagnant with the Ames Web, but we did increase, we did increase with the math as well. Some things that we're doing this year are ensuring that every student is receiving a number talk every day to kind of increase that math numeracy piece. And we are using collaborative team time around math data, as well as doing more math intervention this year. So, so our goal is going to be to increase our Ames Web from 42 to 47% and increase our New York State math score from 35 to 39%. We're really going to look at that numeracy tier transition report, as well as the New York State assessment, as far as our measuring tools go. And we are going to, again, use our multi-tiered systems of support and collaborative team time to really focus on that Tier One and Tier Two instruction and making sure that all of our teachers have a common understanding of what our essential standards are and making sure that we're using common assessments appropriately to make sure that if we do need to do targeted intervention, that we're able to do so in a timely fashion. And that way, all of our students will have mastery of the essential skills needed.
And then our last goal is around that emotional competency. So, we stuck with the same goal as we had last year. We noticed that self-awareness was an area of growth for our students. So, we are looking, you're looking at spring data right here. You can see 65% of our students were in the green, the typical or strength area for self-awareness. So, we're looking to still grow the green this year. So, we're really working on explicit instruction around identifying emotions and how that impacts, you know, behavior around them. So, we're working on that this year. We're continuing to do that by looking at our BIMAS screener. So, as you can see, strategies, building-wide focus on teaching. We are talking about it within our staff meetings. We're modeling and practicing. We've got building-wide activities centered around self-awareness. We do have a morning shark show that broadcasts live every day. So, we're going to be implementing things within the shark show around self-awareness. We also have many, many of our teachers, not all of them, but many of our teachers are implementing the second step curriculum right within their classrooms and then incorporating that throughout their instruction. So, we will continue to work on self-awareness this year. And so, celebrations, the best part, we, we have a lot to celebrate. Last year, we, our students were able, we had a building-wide reading challenge. They had to read 30,000 minutes by the winter, which they reached, which resulted in me dressing up as Elf on the Shelf. We also had a, at the beginning, or last year, we had something to celebrate. We had, last year, we had eight of our students test out of the ENL program. So, we went from, you know, six students in the commanding level to now 14. So, that's something to celebrate as well. We also, this year, we opened up the year with a Happy New Year breakfast with our staff. We all toasted in the new year. We had a Ride for Missing Children event already. And then the most exciting part, after, I don't even know, Greg started this back when he was the principal there, but we finally had a grand opening of our playground. We have an amazing, amazing playground. We have an early primary and upper primary space, and the kids are just loving it. So, a lot to celebrate at Smith Road. And that concludes our presentation. If anyone has any questions for us.
I have a couple. Anybody else before? Just, can you go to one of the graphs? Like, it doesn't matter if it's math or ELA. Just, I think I know the answers, but I don't know if I do or not, so I'm going to ask them. So, the math proficiency that, that comes from the state exam is defined. So, tell, tell me about, what is, tell me about the Ames Web. When is that administered? What's it look like?
So, we administer that in the fall, winter, and spring. So, we just completed our first screener for that.
And did the state exam go computer?
Yes, it was computer-based.
Where in that did that happen?
Oh, gosh, that happened before any of these. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't realize it's been that long.
Yes, yeah, it has been about seven years.
Did not know the answer to that one. So, as you see, it's good I asked. Did not know the answer to that one. So as you see, it's good I asked. Thank you. I just compliment you on the work on the chronic absenteeism. I know that's been identified as a really key place. Got to get them there before we can do anything. So thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We now have we now have Cicer Elementary. So when you're ready, you may come up and take the helm.
I, I usually don't need a mic. I'm usually pretty loud. I just want to introduce my BPT members that are here with us tonight. Dawn Matthews is a fourth grade teacher. Michelle Henderson is our building coach, instructional coach. Michelle Melissa Dickens is our kindergarten. I almost said first grade teacher, but she moved to kindergarten this year. And also in the audience supporting us, Jim DeSantis, our librarian, who made this beautiful Canva presentation for us tonight. Diana Derubo, who moved from second grade to AIS this year. Beth Silver, one of our third grade teachers and John Corilla is our DO liaison. So we're going to get started here. A quick look at our demographics. As you can see, our enrollment went down a little bit. We have stayed pretty consistent with our L population, our English language learners. Our IEP students did not show up. We have currently a hundred and twenty-three students with an IEP. That's twenty-four percent of our population. The rest is pretty, pretty stable. Our mission and vision, you will recognize because it's the district's mission and vision. We decided a couple of years ago that we were, we had the same goals in mind as our district. So those will be familiar to all of you. So our, in our strategic goals, our first one is around our multi-tiered system of supports. And our goal for this is our, to becoming a professional learning community at Cicerol. We meet weekly with our collaborative teams. And this year, we decided to use question two as our focus. As you all know, over the last few years, we've all been, all of the schools have been participating in professional learning communities. And the, the questions are, what do we expect students to know and be able to do? We felt like that was our focus last year. The second question is, how will we know if they were successful? So that's what we're focusing on this year around assessments, looking at a specific assessment protocol at each of our meetings and to focus primarily on math and ELA assessments. Looking at how we give them, making sure that we're consistent in the way that we give our assessments and then analyze the data after those assessments are given.
As part of our goal to, for graduation rate, we are also looking at chronic absenteeism. And our goal is to go from twenty-five percent, I'm sorry, to reduce our numbers by twenty-five percent, going from ten point four percent to seven point eight percent. We do have an attendance flyer that goes home to families. If there's a concern, letters do go home. Three times a year, the letter from the district goes out as well. Phone calls, teachers can also write comments or contact parents themselves. And our data meetings, sometimes we also talk about attendance records there if needed. And you can see here on our graph, each year we have continued to decrease. So we are hoping to get down to seven point eight or better this year.
So here we have our goals for our ELA. We are hoping to increase the percentage of students scoring in tier one within Ames Web from sixty-four percent to seventy percent. And increase the percentage of students scoring in the proficient range on the New York State ELA assessment from thirty-four to forty percent. Our strategies are to continue to implement the CKLA program with our tier one instruction. We are analyzing our program assessment data during our collaborative team meetings so that we can determine our appropriate interventions and extension activities within our intervention time. And we continue to use our school support team and, and MTSS supports as needed to monitor student progress within Ames Web and make any adjustments as needed. Here is our Ames Web data, our gray, our building average. You can see that we have increased over the past three years and we are hoping to further that this year. And our New York State ELA assessments, we recognize that there's a bit of a dip from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two. We did recall that in the twenty-twenty-one New York State ELA assessments, that test was purely multiple choice. There were no short response questions on that exam. And all of those questions were from previous tests. They were all released test questions. So that's why we're seeing a bit of a decrease there. And in terms of math, our goals are to increase the percentage of students scoring in tier one on our math composite from Ames Web from seventy-two percent to seventy-eight percent. And increase the percentage of students scoring in the proficient range on the New York State math assessment from fifty-four percent to sixty percent. And again, our strategies would involve looking into implement, not looking into, but implementing our math program for our tier one instruction. We are also meeting to analyze math assessments in our collaborative team meetings utilizing our school support team and MTSS supports as needed to progress to monitor student progress and make those adjustments. And we're using our math benchmark assessments, our Ames Web plus and our New York State, that should say math assessment to determine whether we've reached our goal. So our New York State math assessments, I don't know why that's ELA. That should be, can we go to the next slide? It should be math. I think you just went the wrong way.
Yeah.
There we go. Yeah, sorry. It's okay. Here is our math Ames Web data, which is our building average across all grades. We have continued to make fairly steady progress in the past three years. And we're hoping to continue that up to that seventy-eight percent this year. And there is our math assessment, our New York State math assessment. Again, we've continued to make steady progress from year to year and hope that that trend continues this year.
Okay, so our emotional competency goal for this year is we've decided to focus on increasing student self-management competency by ten percent. As a building, we recognize that this, us increasing their self-management competency will also help to increase their success rate within the classrooms. Some of the strategies that we will be using will be monitoring the data and the biomass results from last year and using that information to, we use this information to help us set our goal for this year. And the strategies that we'll use are basically centered around our SOAR school-wide expectations, behavior expectations that we launched last year. And that went really well to have consistent and overall in expectations throughout the building. Everyone's using the same language. So we decided to enhance that this year by implementing a celebration program that happens once a month on Friday. And what students are seeing at those celebrations are community examples of, you know, good character and things that they can strive to achieve. The expectations, as you might remember from last year, explicitly teach and model good behavior. And part of that SOAR behavior system, teachers are reflecting one-to-one individually with students about, you know, how to improve and reflecting on their behaviors in order to make them better. So that kind of helps them with their self-management. Our source. So this is, sorry, I didn't know it was going to go right away. So this is our music teacher, Corey Patterson's dad, his name is Mr. Peterson. And he is, he's an artist and he also does programs for kids with music. So he took all of our expectations and he made them into a song for our school. And this is just a little sample of our.
Oh, well, the school they have begun now. Storing at Cicerone, everybody now clap your hands. Clap your hands now. Stop clapping hands now. No matter what it is we do now. We're soaring at Cicerone.
It goes on from there. The kids, the kids really, really love it. And they, Mrs. Patterson has taught them the song lyrics and they, they, the whole school. It's, it's really, it's, it's really something to hear and all of them participating at the same time. It's really created a huge community feel in our building and the kids really look forward to it. So we're hoping that implementing that and creating a sense of community, enhancing our sense of community in our building will also help to improve our self-management scores. So that concludes our presentation. If anybody has any questions for us.
Thank you.
Questions?
I just comment, I would love to see the kids singing this at some point, maybe a little video.
Oh, absolutely. We'd be happy to send it that we, and you're welcome to join us this Friday at two thirty-five in our gym. We'll all be collected, but we'll be sure to have somebody take a video of it. Because one of the things that's happening this Friday is we're, we've invited CMC, which is a local dance company in Cicerone. And they're going to be doing a presentation with some former students. And last week, the last one we had, we had some football players talking about teamwork. So it's, it's, it's very authentic for the kids. So it's cool. So I'll make sure to get you guys that. Anything else?
Yeah, this is kind of off topic a little bit. My two older grandkids went to Cicer Elementary. And every time I went to pick them up or drop them off or everything else, I've always wondered what the backstory was on those carvings on the outside wall as you walk in. Does anybody know what the backstory? Okay, I just thought maybe someone might know, yeah.
They're, they're probably going to be replaced soon with our renovation. So that story.
Oh, no, they're kind of neat.
I don't know. Yeah, we don't know what they.
Hey, we'll auction them off. There we go.
Some research for us. Maybe Mr. DeSantis can get on that.
Thanks.
Just a general comment. I like the way you guys, also the other presentation of Smith Road, as well as you guys are embracing the PLC concept with DeForz. It's a nice organizational method. And like this year, you're, you're looking on the second, the second question, which has to do with assessments. So kind of reminds me a little bit of our old schoolers here who knew Madeline Hunter. It just compartmentalizes and organizes your mission in education because it's not an easy mission and it could be sloppy at times because you're dealing with little humans. But keep on, keep it on. You're doing great.
Yeah, I just want to say a couple of things. Thanks to both of you all for coming. Now we've seen all of these. And I think that there's a lot of positive things going on in every school, which is great. There's certainly room to grow, but of course, it looks like a lot of people have, you know, really thought out plans of how we can approach that. Uh, one thing for just making sure the building's not on fire. No, I know that happens every meeting and every time I think it's fired. That must still be the like high schooler in me. But anyway, I was wondering, Dan, if we could possibly get some clarity on what the differences, and it doesn't need to be right now. But the differences between the Ames Web testing and the New York State testing. Just because there's been a lot of places where there's been trends in different directions and stuff. Overall, we have seen improvement over, across all six schools in the last two years, which is good. But I just wondering, so we can kind of see, you know, where we are nationally versus the state now. So.
We'll present that to, sorry, we'll present that to either next time or within the next few weeks.
Thanks. Sorry, the new guy doesn't know everything.
Okay, other questions? See none. Thank you. Hey, we're at the public comment section. Board of Education meetings are meetings that are pub, where the public is welcome to attend and observe in North Syracuse. Board of Education welcomes your comments on matters related to the district. A period of time not to exceed thirty minutes is set aside at regular meetings of the board for the purpose of hearing comments from interested individuals. Board of Education members will not engage in conversation or answer questions during this portion of the meeting. Issues involving a particular student or employees are not permissible topics during the public meeting. And it's just to note that that's even if it's a complimentary comment. You should not say, identify the staff member or the position. So they're not identifiable. Any employer student concerns should be addressed to the superintendent of schools during regular business hours. We're going to have one speaker per line. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes to present their remarks. And we will have no more than ten. I believe we have six today. And you cannot give or defer your time slot to another person. Our remarks must be addressed to the president of the board or the presiding officer. Most questions related to schools can be answered by a responsible school official by calling during business hours. Written questions may also be addressed to school staff, department directors, central administration or the Board of Education. Please contact Ms. Herrera, our district clerk, if you have any questions. So having read that, we, I have Jessica Soulier as our first speaker.
Your school administrators cite two policies, four, five, one, three, and one, four, two, O as guidelines for instructional material. All books in our libraries fall under instructional material. As shown in recent past, our district is not forthcoming or the best interpreters of guidelines. You presently have students, parents and teachers go into their building principles with concerns of the school's safety and personally feeling unsafe in their classrooms. They have stated that they're, they have stated there are students that are on the fringe as you, your school principal calls them, that are reading books like Assassination Classroom. This is a twenty-one book series currently at the junior high. As of today, within the twenty-one books, you have books that are loaned out to students. Perhaps these students who have these books should raise a red flag. The series glorifies students shooting other students, teachers and their parents. It states multiple times that they are just killing time. In these books, multiple faces of the teachers are clocks, hence killing time. Comforting, huh? Appropriate reading material, right? There are graphics in each book. And they are students killing other students. Seducing teachers, killing them while they're having sex with them. These are in the libraries. If we didn't already have enough to worry about with overly sexually explicit reading material, now we have this. It's a parent's worst nightmare. And I have to think the schools as well. For all the lockdown drills we do and the money being spent by our tax dollars to ensure safety in our schools from the possible threat inside or out, surely someone can see that this is dangerous. We have stationed SROs at each school, yet we have this type of material supplied by our school. It's unacceptable. When I met with the principal, she agreed this material should not be in the school, yet I received a letter from her that it will remain as it remeets district guidelines. Why is the school supplying these to our kids? And the quote, and then you quote, "In the name of education, at the expense of our kids, your teachers and your staff and our communities." You stand behind this as a, in the name of education and we can't ban books. Can you not see that this is not about banning books? That's not a thing. You cannot ban books. You can buy them on Amazon. You can go to the public library. Some things should not be given to kids at the public school level. This is not what we should be educating our kids on. If you were made aware of parents supplying our children with these things that you are, as mandated reporters, you would file a complaint with CPS or authorities. Perhaps we should start doing the same thing. You are potentially subjecting thousands of minor children to harm and endangering their welfare. If it comes to you, if a child comes to you with interest in violence, serial killing, pornography, drugs, bulimia, maybe how to carry out domestic violence or to build a weapon, you do not supply instructional material to them. I am requesting information on who is responsible for the intake of instructional material in our library. If it's committee, I would like specific names on who's on the committee. How are these types of materials getting into our school and who supplies them? And how it specifically falls under meeting district guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Hope Cobinger.
I wish I could say I was happy to be here. I am going to follow suit. May I bring to your attention one of the books currently available in the CNS Junior High School Library? It's called Flamer and it is about a young teenage boy scout who is bullied while coming to grips with his homosexuality and its religious implications. Here are some drawings I saw and words I read. And I would like to forewarn you, it is somewhat explicit. The first illustration, which is right here, depicts the main character wide-eyed, sitting on the floor with his knees to his chest and his arms crossed over them. In the foreground, there is a part of an exposed buttock as the boy is pulling his pants down while facing the main character. And I quote, "We are each busting a load into this bottle. If you don't come, you will have to drink it. Give me that. I'll show you." End quote. The second illustration depicts an arm and hand with the fist clenched with the bottom facing upward. There is another hand lightly pressing a knife to the wrist and I quote, "Too short, too fat, not man enough, not straight enough. I'll never be safe anywhere." End quote. Needless to say, I am appalled and disgusted. As far as I'm concerned, a school library is there to both educate and entertain children academically and creatively, that is, not perversely and maliciously. I can't believe that this kind of material is at the fingertips of our youth today, but it mortifies me to see that it is on the premises of the junior high. My husband and I are trying to raise our daughter with morals and value for herself and others. This book shows neither. So as a parent of a teenager attending this school, I feel as though this book is absolutely inappropriate and demand to have it and any others like it removed from this school's library immediately. Before I go, I have one question for the board to think about. If you have a son or daughter that is 13 or 14 years of age, would you feel comfortable or want them to sign out a book like the one I just read? And here's the paperwork. I can leave it all if you want.
Thank you. Nick Edwards is next.
Before my time starts, I'm jealous of Cicero with their song. I would, I think every elementary school, the kids would
I wanted to hear the whole song and they cut it off.
I started class. I couldn't help it.
But I have it out there and so.
I think Mr. Ramati could write a good one for Lake Shore.
Just, just, just thank staff in general. It's thank staff in general without, okay, okay. I mean, not naming him. That's all. Just to be consistent. Yeah, sorry.
I'd like to thank a superintendent for his attentiveness and follow-through with a particular concern, not only for myself, but the staff members who brought it to my attention. I want to continue with the theme of the evening. I'll be reading from the, this book is gay by Juneau Dawson. A good handy is all about the wrist action. Rub the head of his cock back and forth with your hand. Try different speeds and pressures until he responds positively. A bad handy is grasping a penis and shaking it like a ketchup bottle. Finally, my misunderstanding about rubbing two peens together wasn't far off the mark. Rubbing them together is when one hand feels awesome. Mega combo handy. Blow us. Oral sex is popping. Another dude's peeing in your mouth or indeed popping yours and his. There's only one hard and fast role when it comes to blowjobs. Watch your teeth. Lips and tons, yes. Teeth, no. All men like their blowjobs served like their breakfast eggs in different ways. The term blowjob is massively misleading. You won't be blowing on the penis. It's all about sucking. Slide in your mouth up and down on the shaft of his cock. Letting the guy come in your mouth is a safe sex. No, no. No one wants to have sex with a bald, spotty psycho with balls like shriveled raisins. There's also the breakdown of the sex apps that are available and how to use them. Okay. A picture of a girl with a pointing to her vagina that says, women agree having things inserted into their vagina feels very nice. That ends all my quotes. That last one seems a little misogynistic in my opinion. The book has no educational value. It's literally the definition of grooming. 12 and 13-year-old students don't need to know how to give blowjobs. They need to know math. I think we saw that on the charts. But the union leadership doesn't know the difference between banning books and making sure things are age appropriate. I pity them. Parents finally stand up to them and they cry out to their membership. They're banning books. No. Age appropriateness. You wouldn't show a porn video to a 12-year-old. Why show them books explaining how to give a blowjob? And go down and eat pussy and the other stuff I found. And yes, Paul, it is very inappropriate. You're hitting your hand against the table up there. What about the 12 and 13-year-old kids? Are, we can't control what they see. If a parent wants their kid to have this, go to N O P L right down the road from me. It's there. I won't judge you. Parents have choices of what they want their kids to learn. But the union seems to think that the parents should be left out of it. But the amount of members from this district that have reached out to me and said they're terrified of what their union is doing, that's, that should be a big sign. Okay. 18 seconds to the union. You, you sent out a letter today. One of my teachers sent me. You said that you'll control the board. The boards get replaced during elections and honestly, I think you're all great people up here and I don't think any of you agree with students of 12 and 13 years old reading this. You were a good teacher. You wouldn't do that.
Hey, thank you.
That's all I got. Oh, I'm sorry about the language. I, it's a quote.
Next is Emil Fernandez.
I just want to make sure it's on. So thank you so much for having me today. I wanted to speak to the board specifically because I have an eighth grade daughter. And she attends the junior high. So I'll give you a little bit about me. My family's from the Middle East. We're from Mexico and from Ireland. Lika nations. It's pretty awesome. My great-grandmother was sold at 12 years old to a 48-year-old man for a goat. Okay. So I know what it's like to subject children to sexual material, to sexual content, to things that they can't control. We can control those things as parents. We can control them as board members. So I'm coming here out of concern. I'm coming here to tell you life is funny. I'm thinking this book's got a ton of balloons. It's got a lot of jokes. Someone's going to tell a joke about, you know, an old dad jokes. We're going to go and we're going to laugh about it. It's not. This is content that's very hard to read. The word ass isn't it 15 times. Bitch, 27. Dick, 17. Fuck, 60. I can't say the N-word. That's in there twice. That doesn't include anything, the material that these kids should be reading in the eighth grade. It's disgusting. P U S S Y, C U N T, P U T A, all the same meaning eight times. Shit, 20. It's disgusting. They pay me a lot of money for the way I look. They pay me for more skin I show. Do you know how porn producers have called my agent? Nah, uh-huh. She nods. Should I tell her? I'd probably let you take a picture of me butt naked eating a banana. And I'll stop there. I'm raising my children differently. They talk to me about everything. This is extremely uncomfortable for me to sit here and read this. And I have a master's degree in the management of information systems. I'm halfway through a doctorate in global organizational leadership. I love to see the slides that are up here from Cicero L. And the principal and her staff, they teach my son Maximus, who's in the fourth grade. I love it. I love what we're doing in some of the schools, but as my child progresses through the years and potentially could go to the junior high, I'm going to put my kid a CBA because I will not allow him to go to the school. That's the position I'm in. You're forcing me to spend more money. Taxpayer? Doesn't matter. We don't care what you have to say. We're going to sexualize your child. We don't care. It's wrong. It's wrong. I'm pleading with you. It's wrong. We can make that change, all of us. Doesn't need to be available. And to the last speaker's point, if someone wants their kid to have it, there's the library. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, they have Thomas Kowalski.
There's something special about the innocence of a child. Parents know exactly what I'm talking about. We want them to hold on to their innocence as long as possible because once it's gone, you can't get it back. So picture a student at North Syracuse Junior High picking up this book that's available in the school library and reading the following. And I quote, "Yeah, girl, I'm going to eat her pussy. Hey, yeah. Do you even know how to eat pussy? Uh, not really. Papa Gaines never sat you down and, son, one day you're going to have to eat the pussy? No, he didn't teach me how to do that. But how to eat a butthole. God bless that man. I'm on a pussy deadline. I got a little honey mustard over here and a little Heinz 57 and a whole lot of pussy." Why would the school think that that's appropriate? For students to get in their minds? Picture a teenage girl. She's doing a research project on economics for sales and she picks up this book that's called Sold, thinking there's going to be about sales. Well, here's a couple of quotes from there. And I quote, "She grabs me by the hair. She flips me onto the bed next to the old man and then he's on top of me, holding me down with the strength of 10 men. He kisses me with lips that are slack and wet and taste of onions. He digs his teeth into my lower lip. I cannot see or move or breathe. He fumbles with his pants, forces my legs apart. I can feel him pushing himself between my thighs. I grasp air and kick and squirm. He thrusts his tongue into my mouth and I bite down with all my might." What if she in horror had turned to this page instead? And I quote, "Habib is good with the ladies." Then he's on top of me and something hot and insistent is between my legs. He grunts and struggles, trying to fit inside me. With a sudden thrust, I am torn in two. Oh, yes, he says, Habib is good in bed. Or worse yet, and I quote, "In between men come, they crush my bones with their weight. They split me open, then they disappear. I am torn and bleeding from where the men have been." This book contains graphic depictions of repeated rape and the violent treatment of a 13-year-old girl sold as a sex slave. It's one thing when we read it as adults, we can put it in its proper perspective. But this imagery can cause intense psychological trauma to the mind of an unsuspecting child. When we open the fridge and we smell something rancid, we don't simply move the rotten food to another shelf in the refrigerator. We throw it out. So moving these books to another section of the library isn't the answer. And for those who say it's only a couple of dozen books among thousands, please, no reasonable person would take a drink from a glass of lemonade that's from a pitcher that's mostly lemonade with one or two drops of pee in it. Parents, stand up for your children. Board members, please protect our children. One last thing, I'm sorry. But I do recall hearing that there's fourth graders that are going to be going into a middle school next year. Do you imagine if this fell into the hands of a nine-year-old? What type of trauma that would cause?
Thank you. And Ellison Recht.
The amount of sexually explicit books in our school library was not only shocking, but quite disturbing to me as a parent. These books contain pornographic passages instructing children, minors, on how to perform sexual acts, sexually explicit scenes, both homosexual and heterosexual, violent acts, and in some cases, graphic illustrations. The American College of Pediatrician warns that children suffer many negative mental and physical effects due to the exposure of pornography. Some of the negative effects include depression, anxiety, violent behavior, and acting out. Since mental health has increased dramatically in our youth, we should reevaluate the content our children are exposed to. One book on the shelf at the junior high and the high school are All Boys Aren't Blue. I'm going to read a couple of lines. "You grabbed my hand and made me touch it. It was the first time I ever touched a penis that wasn't my own. I knew what was happening wasn't supposed to. Cousins weren't supposed to do these things with cousins. There you stood in front of me, fully erect, and said, 'Taste it.' At first I laughed and refused, but then you said, 'Come on, Matt, taste it. This is what the other boys like to do when we like each other.' I only did it for 45 seconds before you had me stop. Then you got down on your knees and told me to close my eyes. That's when you began oral sex on me as well. You began stroking yourself in front of me. Then you began to moan slightly. Watching you ejaculate was shocking. I remember you telling me it's semen. One day when nobody's around, you should do this until you get a feeling you never felt before and bust." Another book at the junior high and high school, Looking for Alaska. "Lying naked in bed together, already drunk, smoking a joint. Sex is pretty fun. You're hopeless. Want to go porn hunting? We ran to the TV room, closed the blind, locked the door, and watched the movie. It opened up with a woman standing on a bridge with her legs spread while a guy knelt in front of her, giving her oral sex. She said, 'Give it to me, give it to me,' and moaning. On another page, 'Have you ever gotten a blowjob? Laura unbuttoned my pants and pulled my boxers down a little and pulled out my penis. Then she wrapped her hands around it and put her mouth on it.' I literally could go on forever with these books. I feel anyone with common sense could clearly see that these books do not belong on library shelves for minors. I will not stand by while our children are being sexualized and their innocent is being taken away by wolves we're supposed to protect them from. I am requesting to be informed in writing who is responsible for ordering the books for the school libraries, and if there are any guidelines to follow such as age-appropriate, sexually explicit ratings. Please also include where the funds are coming from to obtain the sexual content. Is it taxpayer money? And if there's any funding coming from any other organization, if so, please include the names. I also just want to add real quick that you said on here, our community's most precious members are the children. Precious members, are these the school's standards? Are these the morals you want of the kids at our school? Because it's not mine. This is filth.
Thank you. Hey, Board of Education Committee reports policy.
Thank you, Paul. Our next policy committee meeting will be November 14th here at the district office.
Okay, thank you. And legislative, Mr. Crabtree?
Legislative committee will be meeting on November 8th and will be having some S E L talk.
Okay, thank you.
And 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 then the BOSIS report. We had our monthly meeting. I wanted to say that I went to all the open houses in Cortland and in Andover County. I'm amazed at the number of students, men and or boys and girls, welding, construction, automobile, health occupations. OCM BOSIS is really growing. I want to thank North Syracuse Central School District for the number of students that are coming to our to our facilities and learning trades that'll help them forever. We are going to have a field trip on November 14th. Unfortunately, for those of you that aren't retired or work, it's going to be during the day from nine to 11:30. We're going to meet over at nine o'clock at the Thompson Road facility. And when it's all over, we'll have lunch made by the culinary students. So Jill will be putting something out. And if you can attend that day, it would be great so that you get to see what our students are really are doing in the trades and also the STAR program Innovation Tech. We will be meeting with some students who attend Innovation Tech and they'll tell us about their program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Superintendent Bowles.
Thank you. First, I just again want to recognize Michael Bragman for all he's done for this district and all of central New York. He has truly made a difference for many districts and he will be sorely missed. Football team on Friday night. Pouring rain did beat Utica Proctor, so they're moving to the quarterfinals. Sectionals, we have multiple teams in sectionals. Field hockey will be going up against Beeville in sectional semifinals, 5:30 tomorrow. Boy soccer sectional semifinals tomorrow also at FM. Wednesday, girls soccer. They'll play the winner of RFA in Syracuse City and they'll be going up, meeting at Chittinango. One of our sophomores, Drew Kippen, Player of the Year, Boys Golf, 10th grader. Also, Kayden Hacker will also be going to state. Girls Swimming finished five and two with a win in sectional power over sexual powerhouse Skinny Atlas. They won eight of 12 events. Sectionals is October 31st with diving on November 1st. Optimist Basketball started this Saturday morning at Gillette Road. So again, for all those that are participating, congratulations. And I think that is all, Mr. Mr. Farfalia.
Thank you. Board of Ed comments. I just got a quick one and I just want to remind the board that on November 18th, we have the retreat scheduled. So keep your calendars open, hopefully, if you can. Well, it's at the Holiday Inn. It's up by, I call it Gander. I don't know what it is now, but it's an RV place, I guess. But that was still Gander, just not, just no mountain sports. We'll get you more information on that the next. We'll remind you again though later, just want to remind that. So other board comments.
I turned on the mic before. Just wanted to again thank all the elementary schools for presenting. I know that there's still a couple of folks here because it was very helpful to see what is going on in each building. I think that a lot of times we're up here kind of doing our thing and that, you know, there's all sorts of different things going on. But it really is nice to hear all of the hard work that you all are doing, but also everything that you're trying to do to help our kids because it's it's very easy to not see it. So thanks for doing that for us.
I think all of us received an email from this Peter Nowacki. As you know, Sandy Ruffo has been our area four director for the New York State School Board Association for a long time. She's been great. She came to a meeting here. She's gone to BOSIS before. She represents all of area four, but that's great. She just got elected the president of the New York School Boards Association. I just think that's wonderful. But that leaves an opening. And we have one candidate, but I want the board to know. And I'm sure Paul knows this, that we need to nominate someone within the next two meetings. And the last time there were two candidates, Michael remembers this. And we need to wait a little bit to see if there are other candidates. And then maybe contact them to to let them know that we need to know a little bit more about each of them. But that will be happening the next two meetings.
Okay.
Very important, very important to nominate someone who's going to represent us.
And we've had the same one for a long time, so that's a good point. Yeah. Thank you. Other board comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion for consideration approval of the minutes of the October 10th, 2023 meeting. Motion for Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, pose that is carried. Like a motion to group items B, C, and D together for the classification of emplacement of disabled students. Motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Segrew. We have the in-school, preschool, and home instruction from the committees. That is before us. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, and that is carried. Item A, approve the corrective action plan in response to the auditor's management letter. A motion placed at before us. Motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Dr. Kramer. That is before us. It was discussed in the Friday letter. That's mainly a reconciliation in the software with the food service to work with WinCap. So if there's any questions. Seeing none, all in favor, post, and thank you. That is carried. Item B, resolution authorizing the commencement of the social media litigation. A motion placed at before us. Motion, Mr. Luden, second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. That is before us. Questions? This is a roll call.
But I I'd like to have this explained a little bit because I saw this on the news that I believe FM, was it FM or JD? So could we have, I agree on this, but I think it needs to be a little more explanation on it. It's a it's a law type suit.
Yes, it's a class action lawsuit that we are also joining in with other districts. The ones that you've seen on TV are just the ones that their boards have approved it currently. Right now, there is nothing that the district will be losing by entering a lawsuit. And they'll only, once a settlement comes about, there'll be funds that the district would be able to acquire from that.
I did I read correctly? This is a national movement? Okay. Do you know, anybody know where it was authored or? I just was curious. Okay. Okay. Other questions or comments? Because it's before us now and it'll be a roll call vote. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Carrera. Aye. Yeah, that is carried. Thank you. I'd like to take items C and D together because they're for approval of service contract with BOSIS on our copy machine. So motion, if they can have a motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Luden. Those are items C and D. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, post, and thank you. And we have one abstention. That is carried. Item E, please. Motion for recommendation of contract awards for CNS Phase Two renovations. Mr. Marizio, make the motion. Second from Mr. Moody Wuzik. Any questions, concerns, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, and that is carried. Thank you. And F to create a point for FTE, physical education. Motion, please. Motion for Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Segrew. That is before us. Question, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, post. Thank you. That is carried. Just an acknowledgement of a gift and we have a gift. Earth and were clay valued? Okay, so that is before us, the gift we have under G. Motion, please, to accept that. Motion, Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Segrew. Any discussion?
I just say number two. That's what it means.
Oh.
In the obituary. In the obituary, it was to give, I believe, to the fire department or also to our district. So it's too bad you don't wait until the total is because we'll keep doing it.
Right, right. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any further? Well, after every time we have to accept it, we'll have to make. All in favor? Pose, that is carried. Thank you. Instructional personnel report A, a motion, please, put that before us for acceptance. Motion from Mr. Segrew, second from Dr. Kramer. That is before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, and that is carried. And support staff personnel B, please. Motion, Mr. Thorne, second from Mr. Luden. That's before us. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, pose, and that is carried. I'll make a motion for executive session. I'll look for a second. This motion is to move an executive session for the reviewing of two personnel items and one legal matter with no action to follow. If I can have a second, second from Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, pose, and thank you. That is carried. And motion for meeting adjournment. Motion, Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Um, so I was told, sorry.
It's all right.
But I was told that at the Board of Education, we need to have a giving report on the student body. Is that something that hasn't started yet or?
Well, it hadn't started yet, but we're new at this too. So Mr. Crabtree mentioned to me and a lot of other districts will put a specific spot on for you, which we haven't done yet. So we should have done that in the regular board kind of roundtable comments, but we're not adjourned yet. And if you have a report, you may absolutely do it right now. And thanks for speaking up. What we'll, what we'll do, I'm sorry. We can put it right, just right underneath the board comments. We'll make sure we have a spot.
Thank you.
And thank you. Sorry about that.
Of course. I'd just like to preface my report by saying that most of my feedback received so far has been from high school students. And so the majority of this report is high school related. Since our last meeting, I've received a plethora of feedback from the student body. And today I'd like to bring to attention two of the most common subject, subjects of feedback. Firstly, students and teachers alike have expressed disliking to not being able to stay after on Thursdays. Teachers feel tight on time to give after school help to students. And students often now have to pick between staying after for corrections or for extracurriculars. Addition, again, due to only three days being available for clubs and activities, students now are forced to choose between overlapping meetings. The student body requests that the Board of Education takes into consideration allowing more days for students to stay after. My second subject of feedback is in relation to the newly instated bathroom lanyards. Although there is much discourse and divide in regards to some of the specifics regarding these devices, two points of issue appear nearly unanimous, sanitization and inconvenience. It's weird to think that less than two years ago, we were all wearing masks, sanitizing desks between every block and not even allowed to stand next to each other. But now we're passing around what is essentially, as one student described it to me, a germ necklace. The absorbent fabric is not conducive with sanitization standards. And so the student body would like the Board of Education to consider changing the lanyard material so that students or staff may sanitize these devices at their own discretion. Whether that be by hanging, changing it to a plastic lanyard or introducing new laminated color coded pass cards again so that they could be sanitized. Lastly, the student body would like the Board of Education to take in consideration having at least two bathroom passes in every classroom. Time and time again, students have complained about people leaving with the lanyards for prolonged durations. The longest I've heard is about half an hour where somebody has left the class. Other people are waiting to go to the bathroom and they're just not there, which, you know, the teacher can't always necessarily pay attention or be liable to that, especially around test time. But I myself have witnessed students competing for who gets the pass next. To the point where the student, the teacher will be lecturing and I looking at my side eye and I see two students like looking out the door, getting ready to grab the pass. And although it is kind of a funny situation to watch from afar, I can see how this would impede on their educational experiences as a whole. Having two passes would sharpen the focus of the students and lessen the burden bore from those who abuse the lanyard system. Thank you for taking these points into consideration and I hope this was insightful on the opinions of the student body. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll roll that, we'll, as Robert's rule, roll that in discussion of our adjournment. But now I have a question because now I was I was ignorant to this. So you're talking about lanyards. There's a bathroom pad pass on a lanyard?
Yeah, so.
So you wear it so or what?
People wear, which I don't.
So you wear it and walk down the hall that tells everybody where you're going or?
Not only that. Okay. So they had a color code based on bathroom floor. So that basically don't have a bunch of people grouping up, going to specific bathrooms to anything with drugs, vaping, anything like that. They're just trying to lessen that.
Right, okay.
Which is a great thing. But the material for the lanyards is similar to this lanyard material, except it's a little different. I'm pretty sure it's more absorbent. So any sort of liquids or anything like that, it's just like stuck in it. Sanitize it physically too much. You'd have to actually physically wash the device. And as far as I know, the vast majority of them have not been washed once since the year started.
So these, and I'm sorry to ask you a hundred questions. So I didn't know, are these standard, like each floor, the same exact kind of lanyard? Or is it, it's not different room by room? Every room, they're issued for that purpose? Okay.
So we just want one for there to be sanitation and two for there to be a second one. I mean, I can't tell you how many kids I've seen exit the bathroom and not wash their hands. So I feel like.
Okay.
You know, separating that as much as we can.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. Any further discussion on our adjournment? And I will get you on that agenda. Thank you. All in favor? Pose, we are adjourned at 7:25. Thank you. I'm still, I'm sitting here shell shocked right now.